Hi Ryan. Hi Ryan.
He says, "Where am I?" That's my grandbaby.
This is George Rosie. It's 6:50.
Let the record show, it is now 7:04. And we all just returned from closed session. We have, Said, do we have a young person to lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Sorry, yes we do. President Ayala, it's Raven McGregor. She's right here, and she is from, of course, Hugh Banks Elementary. Come on up Raven. They're rooting for you.
Please stand and face the flag for the pledge of allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and limited to its fall. Thank you.
We have a quick announcement by Board Member O'Kelly.
Yes, before we begin, I would like to make a very important announcement. Our very own Jen Harper was selected by the State Network of Educators for the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium's Digital Library. That's a name. Jen was selected from hundreds of applicants. She will truly be an asset to this group as she has been to us here in Rialto. Jen, please stand up and everybody give her a big congratulations. She is awesome.
Next, we have a presentation by Hugh Banks Elementary School. And let me read some talking points here. The Lady Huskies Dance Team comprised of 4th and 5th grade students, led by dance coaches Olivia and Courtney Silva, and Jackie Bashi Yu, will electrify you with their performance. To the Candyman, on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you to Hugh Banks Principal, Dr. Monte Stewart, the staff and parents and guardians who are here tonight to support our terrific students' performance. We thank you. Next, we have a report out of closed session. Mr. Mohammed.
Thank you, President. In closed sessions, Board approved placing our Superintendent Sebrum at Minister Le Woodpey. It was a 5-0. In closed sessions, Board approved place our Deputy Superintendent Chief Staff at Minister Le Woodpey. The Board is 5-0. In closed sessions, Board also approved appointed me to bring a legal counsel and directed by the Board to bring attorney or legal counsel to advise the Board effective next Board meeting. And it was a 5-0. That's all. Thank you. Oh, yes. Sorry. In closed session, Board also made one appointment. If I can find it.
You have it in that green envelope. Felix.
Sorry. Thank you. In closed session, Board made one appointment. Julie Bertelli, as the Behavior Analyst. The Board was 5-0. Is she here?
Congratulations. We have lots of behavior to analyze.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Islam.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Your excuse.
Next, we have public comments. And we will begin with items that are not on the agenda. Mr. Hernandez. And I would just remind everybody that we have three minutes to speak. And please respect the time. Mr. Hernandez. Going once. Going twice. Could be him.
Good evening. My name is Akara Hernandez. And the major reason that I am here, because I was invited by one of the members of the staff of the school. I feel honored and privileged that he invited me. And he informed me of the situation that's taking place tonight with the Board. And I felt deeply concerned primarily because I have my grandson in high school. And in a few years, I'll have my granddaughter as well. So I take it seriously in the events that take place in the school. And I understand by quite a few people that this superintendent that they're considering relieving from his position, I understand he's a superior person. Very dedicated and very humble. He's dedicated to the cause, and he believes in helping everyone. And that impresses me. And when I hear incidents like this that are taking place, I feel morally obligated to do my very best and try to defend and support the people that will need me for the benefit of the school, and most importantly, for the children. Because in the final analysis, we're here to educate the children and make them be the best that they can be in the years to come. Because that's what makes the world go around. And that's what makes our world strong and positive. So I want to emphasize to the Board that I seriously hope that they will take all serious considerations to treat this man with all justice. Because as I understand it, he's like an icon, a legend, that many people, many students that are now in school will remember him forever. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Mr. John Pruitt.
I feel honored that you've raised it because I've been considered short all my life. First of all, let's remember 9/11. Let's not forget. 12th anniversary of 9/11. Let's not forget. First, Board, I would like to acknowledge, thank you for allowing me this time to speak. At the last two Board meetings, I understand that you have a concern about invoices and my work that has been done with the Board. You know, when I hear a comment about double dipping, I've never double dipped in my life. I was raised as an only child, so I was allowed to have all the ice cream I wanted. But I've never double dipped. And here, when I do something, I make notes. And every time I reviewed a Board meeting, I wrote it down, the time I started and the time I stopped. I made notes on every meeting. The President Ayala contacted me. He stated what was needed, that was in the contract, and I followed the contract. I'm a very detailed person. So if you had some questions, I would have hoped that you would have come to me before now, before I have to take the step of coming here to say, "approve my invoice and let's move on." In reviewing the Board meetings, Board, you have a lot of problems. You have many problems. There's a lot you don't know, and there's a lot you need to know. There are a lot of good things you're doing, but you need to do better. Mrs. Gilbert, Board Member Gilbert, thank you. Mr. Montinas, thank you. Mr. Ayala, thank you. Mr. Montez, thank you. Mrs. O'Kelly, thank you. But you still got some work to do that needs to be done. For example, April 10th, Board meeting. That was a Board meeting that there were no questions asked by the Board members. And as much as Mrs. O'Kelly asked questions of Mr. Montez, I thought that would be the Board meeting that you would ask the most questions. That was a profound Board meeting for you, and there were no questions. When you talk about private schools increasing, when you talk about decrease in birth, when you talk about planning, and you ask no questions, you are failing in doing your job. You're supposed to take that meeting and plan for the next 20 years. And you fail to do that. Mrs. O'Kelly, we've talked about it. Nope, it doesn't take 92% and 8% to run the district. It's less than 8%. Mr. Montez, finance is not the number one priority in a school district. It's number four. If you don't get it together, you're going to make some mistakes. And what's the bottom line? Children would be hurt. I ask you to approve my contract. I've done the work.
Thank you.
Next, we have Justin Jordan.
Good evening. I'm Justin Jordan. And today, I'm here to address the Board because I honestly made a mistake. And as an educator, you know, we're supposed to be professional every day. I do believe we should come in a suit and tie every day. We should follow all the rules every day. And as a person that's in the military, as military personnel, usually I carry a knife as a tool when I'm on duty. And sometimes, these things leak over into our personal lives. And I wake up in the morning, grab everything I think I need, and I put my personal knife in my pocket that I use throughout the day. And I know now that that's wrong. I mean, I've been counseled by my first sergeant. I've been briefed and everything. I've been disciplined. And I understand now to the full extent that that's something that I should not have on my person when I'm in a professional educational environment. And that I should come every single morning and aspire to be the educator that the kids can look up to. I mean, I shouldn't just put a polo shirt on in the morning. Every morning, I should be coming in a suit and tie. Every single morning, I should be addressing the class in a professional manner as the educator that I aspire to be, as someone that has passed all the exams and reached the pinnacle. And I feel that I'm ready to step up and do that if the Board will grant me a chance to prove and grant my honor back, especially on this day of September 11th, when we remember everyone that does put on the uniform. And sometimes, we need to be reminded of things. And you know, I do put on that uniform as a reservist. And as a reservist, you know, I have that honor that I want to maintain and I want to keep. And I also gave an apology letter to Ms. Kramer because I have not been acting in a manner that I think I should be acting in. And I should always be the ones that the kids look up to, especially as someone who grew up in Rialto. I am a product of the Rialto Unified School District. And I would hate to have that taken away from the children. I think that they need someone up there, a young educator, that has been through the system that they have been through, that can stand up there in front of them and say, "Hey, I made it this far. I think you can too." And to say, "You should all go to college. You should all want to be an educated individual." And I feel like I am 100% ready to do that. And I will never, ever make the mistake again of waking up and putting my army tools into my pocket that I shouldn't have in an educational environment. And I'm extremely sorry. And I would hope that I can get that letter in the mail, and the Board would say, "Hey, we want you to come back and be an educator for Rialto Unified School District." And I also have Sergeant here, my senior NCO, who will be speaking on my behalf as well. And I thank all the Board members for your time. And I really hope that you consider it, and I hope so.
Sergeant, did you sign a slip?
He did, yes.
You did? And, sir, what is your last name?
It's McLeod.
McLeod.
It's this one. Those both together.
Slash. I see it. Please.
First off, good evenings to everybody, to the Board. Thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity to speak on behalf of my soldier. Justin and I, we serve in the same unit out of Moreno Valley, California. And I joined the unit about 18 months ago. And I've known this soldier the entire time. He's one of my better soldiers. So when he told me he had this issue, it was never a question. I was going to be there for him, you know. And I kind of want to remind everyone that we as military members, I have served with the Marines. I've served with the California National Guard, and now with the Reserves. And I have yet to come across a service member that does not have a blade in his pocket, or her. And I mean, I think it's safe to say that it is the nature of what we do. Now, with that being said, I understand that he's also our teacher here. And you know, you have rules, regulations, and policies that must be abided by at all times. I get that. I get that. And I just think that in his particular case, he made a simple mistake. And I, you know, I've yet to come across anyone that does not make mistakes. You know, so what I ask is that, as you move forward collectively, to make a decision in terms of his future as a teacher here, be as understanding as you can possibly be. And I can tell you right now, as I said before, he's one of my better soldiers, so that I would take into combat with me. And I say that to you because it's very important. I wouldn't do that for everybody. I just wouldn't do it. It wouldn't be smart. It wouldn't be safe for me or anybody else around me. So keep in mind of those few words. And with that, again, I thank you. And hopefully, we will see this great educator around. Thank you.
Next, we have Olivia Arsenega.
On this day, so symbolic as 9/11, I'm here to ask for security for my school. KC Elementary. We need a security gate. All of our children are exposed. That anybody can enter and take somebody, take one of our children. My daughter is in kindergarten. Please, let's not wait for something bad to occur. We need that you take this into consideration. Today, it's only me. But I know that many parents are worried about this. Thank you.
Next, we have Mrs. Patterson.
Good evening. My name's Tanya Patterson, and I'm here for Eisenhower High School. I'm one of the ROTC moms, and I'm here for Dr. Sebrum. It's coming to my attention that it's up on question if he's going to proceed in his position. He has been a very significant part in the ROTC program to keep the kids motivated, to help support them financially, emotionally, and physically. At many events that we have, he does his very best to show up. I've gone to most of the events. I haven't seen all your guys' faces there. And that's very significant to these kids. These kids have to show up early. They stay late. They have a lot on their plate. A lot of parents don't even know what these kids go through. But Dr. Sebrum is always there financially and emotionally for our captain, for our students, and as parents. So we need your guys' support to keep him in position to continue with the good work he's doing, not only for ROTC, but for the school district of Rialto. Thank you.
Next, we have Roberta Thompson.
Hello, my name is Roberta Thompson. I'm the Marine mom at Eisenhower High School, one of them, one of the three. And I too am here to speak about Dr. Sebrum. He's been financially supportive, physically supportive, and also for other programs. I've seen him at events like a swim meet. And there's times that my son was at a swim meet, and there was not even a principal, other teachers, nobody there. And I've seen him. I've seen him and Dr. Wallace. I've seen him at water polo matches. And I think that he's very supportive of all the kids. And I think it would be in our best interest to keep him. And it's not a popularity contest, so it doesn't matter who likes who, or it's what's best for the children. And I think that he's doing a great job, and I would like to see him stay. Thank you.
Next, we have Russell Silva.
Good evening, Board members, President Ayala, Administration. My name is Joseph Silva, and I'm a resident of Rialto. I'm here tonight to speak about the new football fields that we have going. I attended the first game of the season for Rialto High School where they dedicated their football field last Friday. And I was very impressed and happy with the way that the stadium looked. And after years of service that students have put in for that school, it's wonderful that the Knights finally have a beautiful stadium. However, I was very disappointed with the fact that at the opening ceremonies, it seemed like the football coach, the team captains, and the team members were on the sidelines, seemingly not even part of the ceremonies. If the students are the number one priority in this district, then why, and since they waited patiently and so long to have this magnificent field for them, why is it that they were not included with the ceremonies? Even if all they would have done was stand in the center of the field, proudly wearing their uniforms, and standing for the Rialto School District. Although it was really exceptionally wonderful to have the helicopter deliver the first football, and nothing against President Arnie Ayala's athletic capabilities as a wide receiver, but how much grander and memorable would it have been had the ball been dropped into the hands of the varsity team captain with all of his teammates standing around cheering him on? I'd really like to ask the district and the Board members to be more mindful of the students and their feelings. Being able to participate in such memorable events is what makes me carry a fond and proud memory of the school that I went to when I was in high school. How can students feel proud of their alma mater if they're not included with the activities in such momentous events? I hope that you take what I'm saying into consideration, not just for the next opening for the football field of Carter and Eisenhower, but for other major events at all grade levels that are where everything is directly beneficial to the children. Thank you.
Next, we have Andres Luna.
Good evening, President Ayala, Vice President Montez, Board of Education, Superintendent, family and friends. My name's Andres Luna. I'm the Senior Director of Secondary Education here for the Rialto Unified. I'm here to tell you about an event where we are going to celebrate kids on the Rialto football field. This weekend, we began our middle school sports program. Board, I have provided you a year's schedule, a year's schedule. And if you notice, football and volleyball will be at Rialto High School. I want to thank Principal Arnie Ayala for that. I want to thank Principal Arnie Ayala for that. Basketball will be held at Rialto Middle School and Eisenhower High School. Rhea McGyver, Scott Sparks are willing to help us out. And soccer and track will be held at Carter High School. Christine Foot has been more than generous in accommodating to us. Games will begin at 8:00, as you can see. We have all the teams rared up and ready to go. These kids fired up. This is the future of our district. These are the kids that'll be playing on that Rialto, Eisenhower, and Carter football fields in the next three years. I invite all the public, I'm going to ask Saieda if she would post at least the fall schedule on our website. Come out and see these kids. I'm out there on Saturdays. It's the most fantastic thing. Finally, as a former principal, where I used to go to every football game at Rialto High School, Eisenhower, and Carter, I find these games much more exciting than those high school games. Come out and see them. They're fantastic. Board of Education, on behalf of the community, I want to thank you for your vision, your support on this fantastic program. Thirty years that I have been in this district, this is the best, one of the best things I've seen, and I want to thank you on behalf of the community.
We have two more requests to speak. They didn't check whether it's on the agenda or off the agenda, so I'll just ask the question. Mr. Kenneth Shattuck?
Yes.
Are you speaking on the agenda or off the agenda?
That's a good question.
Good morning, board members. My name is Ken Shattuck. I am a local accountant here in Rialto, and with me to my right is Ron Zurich from American West Bank, and to my left is our current president from Rialto Rotary, Mr. Bruce Ricker. And he has a present for you, board members, and on a positive note tonight, there you go, and this homework, this is a dictionary, Webster's Dictionary. This is our ninth year for distributing the dictionaries throughout the third grades, and all the students in the third grades of Rialto will be receiving this dictionary in the next two to three weeks. Right now, well, that count would be up to about 18,000 dictionaries have been distributed over the last nine years. So, here's your homework. Bruce is going to give that to you right now. We're getting clearance here from security to be sure to approach the podium. Bruce is very careful about that, so. We want to thank you for your support all these many years. Rialto Rotary has been in Rialto since 1948, and I've been a Rotarian for 22 years, so I'm very happy to serve our community here in Rialto. And Mr. Zurich with American West Bank has provided half of the support financially, so if you want to open a bank account here in town, Ron would like to see you come on Riverside Avenue downtown to help him with that. So, we appreciate the bank, we thank you for your time this evening. Gee, I got another minute and 28 seconds. But anyway, thank you so much. I love teachers a lot. It's my passion, so. Oh, we have, we have, okay, all right. I brought extras, just in case. All right. And with that, I think I'll say goodnight. Thank you for allowing the time, and we just appreciate the opportunity to be able to serve our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we thank you, sir. And the same question, this is Sergeant McLeod? You, yeah, because you have two that you, okay, so we're good. I don't believe we have anybody else, so we'll move on to, we have presentations, we don't have any presentations on the agenda other than we heard earlier. We have public hearing. We need to move to open public hearing. Do we have a motion to move into a public hearing?
So moved.
O'Kelly, Ms. O'Kelly?
Second.
And second by Clerk Martinez. Vote by board members?
Aye.
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 So, the vote is 5-0. Motion carries. We'll go ahead and read a public hearing. Pursuant to the requirements of governmental code and board policy, the Form for Public Disclosure of Proposed Collective Bargaining Agreement, AB 1200, statutes of 1991, Chapter 1213, as revised by AB 2756, statutes of 2004, Chapter 25, Government Code 3547.5, between the Rialto Education Association and the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education, is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice. And you can look at reference D 1.1-5. Moving on to two, public hearing, pupil textbook and instructional material programs, also there's a reference on that, D 2.1. Three, item three, public hearing, pursuant to the requirements of governmental code and board policy, the initial contract re-opener proposal for the 2013-2014 school year submitted by the Communications Workers of America, CWA, for an agreement between the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education and the Communication Workers of America, CWA, is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice. There's a reference, D 3.1-2. We have a motion to close public hearing.
I think, I think we need to ask if anybody has--
Okay, I didn't see it here, but there were no requests here, but let's go ahead and just publicly announce it. Are there any, was there anybody who would like to speak on any of those agendacized Would you please state your name, sir, when you get to the podium?
My name is Jesse Miles, and I've been around the Rialto School District about 48 years. My grandkids, my grandkids, and I've got great-grandkids coming along. And I'm here to represent Mr. Jordan, Justin Jordan, which come from our neighborhood. We've seen him grow up, we've seen him follow all the laws, and we, he went to finish college, went into the reserves, and we are really proud of him for becoming a productive citizen. And I just want to, you know, ask for forgiveness. I'm also a 21-year-old military man. I worked for Lockheed 21 years, and I heard you gentlemen say double-dip. I was a proud double-dipper. And I just want to thank you and hope that you will consider, Mr. Jordan.
We normally have slips to fill out, so if you haven't filled out a slip for announcements or closed-session items, or items that are on the agenda, it makes it difficult for us to follow, but that's okay. We're, we're open to you. But we had three items here that were agendacized. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to make reference to any of those three agendacized items?
Board President Ayala, if nobody else would like to comment regarding these items, I move that, I'm sorry?
Yes, ma'am. Just please state your name, and if you could tell us which item so we can follow you.
This is item number three, reference D 3.1-2.
Please.
And I am Ms. Estruck, and I hope we will be meeting with you about this re-opener soon. And thank you for your consideration.
Is there anyone else? If there's no one else, do we have a motion to close public hearings?
So moved.
Okay. Vice President Montes?
Second.
And Member O'Kelly? Vote by board members?
Aye.
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 5-0, and the time is 7:42. Okay, next, we have the consent calendar items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by the Board of Education members or the superintendent for individual action. Do we have a motion for the consent items, E through J, before we ask for any pulls?
I move to accept consent calendar items.
Okay, so we have-- Okay, we have Member Gilbert, and then we have a second by Clerk Martinez, and a vote by board members?
I have a poll.
Okay. My apologies. Which poll?
H3.
H3, okay.
And I'm good with all of the contracts except the RJ Allen and Associates.
Okay. Any other, any other pulls? Okay, we'll come back and vote on that one. If there are no other pulls, we have a first and a second. Can we get a vote by board members for all the items except for H3, and they are listed E through J?
And it's not all of H3, it's just one contract on H3.
I understand. Do we have a vote?
Mr. President, to clarify, we're voting on everything except the contract for RJ Allen?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have a 5-0. Okay, and let's move on to H3, and that's business and financial, and oh, with, let me back up for a minute, we have MICA, we have preferential vote. I forget that once in a while. My apologies to you. Yea or nay? Well said. No one's going to argue with you. Okay, business and financial here, so let's take a look at that. Okay, so let's, let me read what we have here. The H3, the item in question is the contract with RJ Allen and Associates. And Ms. O'Kelly, would you like to lead the discussion?
Yes, I'd like each of you to take one of each of these papers that are being passed As you can see, one of those papers is a copy of the contract page from the May 29th board meeting, which was the first time that we voted on a contract with RJ Allen and Associates. This is now the third time that this item has been on the agenda. The other page I gave you is an additional bill that was submitted on August the 8th. If you can see, and I'm just going to just read this, fact, as you can see, the original contract amount was for $6,000, and it is still in effect until September 30th. That is on this page. You see the dates of the contract right there. I circled them. Fact, Mr. Pruitt submitted a $5,300 bill to the district on August the 8th for work completed in July while his original contract was still in effect. The work that he listed on the bill was the same work that was to be covered by the original contract. Fact, the board never approved any additional work for this contract. No work is to be completed without prior board approval. We do not do the work and then submit a bill to the board. There has to be prior board approval. When I was a principal, the principals were told that if we allowed any work to be done on our campuses prior to board approval, we would have to pay for that work ourselves. That is a very serious district and board policy. It is district policy to never allow work to be completed without board approval. If this contractor feels that he provided any additional services, he did it without board approval. And we do not owe Mr. Pruitt any more money. To pay him additional money would totally violate our district and board policies. His contract, first contract, is still in effect till the end of this month, so any work that he has done for this entire time is covered under this contract amount. We do not owe him any more contract. We never approved any additional work.
Any other comments?
Well, I'd just like to point out that it says, the original contract that's still in effect says NTE, $6,000, and for clarification, what does NTE mean?
Not to exceed.
Thank you.
Any other comments? We hired RJ Allen as a consultant to assist the board in moving forward from making mistakes and blunders. The man came to us with experience from being a previous board member himself, and in a consulting company, he came recommended, and so we hired him. And then during our discussions and our workshops, we found that it was necessary to continue the process. So, another way of looking at this would be like a change order. So, you have a contractor come in your house, he gives you a bid, and you say, maybe you could expand the cabinets at a couple extra doors. I could do it for you, but it's going to require a change order, and that's what we did. And we did it at the workshop.
I'm sorry, Board President, for clarification, who's "we"?
Myself, Mr. Martinez, and I don't believe that Ms. Gilbert was, she missed the first one?
I wasn't there.
And on the second one?
I wasn't at the workshop.
There was only one workshop, and we had mentioned that it might be nice to have another workshop, but if you look at the original contract, it was to include two board workshops.
So, he documented his hours, he showed us his hours, and in all good faith, the man needs to get paid, and so we just need to vote on it and then put this item to rest. So, can we get a motion to pay the man, and then we'll vote publicly and--
Mr. Ayala?
I think we need to clarify one item that's on the August 8th bill. Consult with board members, and each one of us was named, and in the original statement, as Ms. O'Kelly stated, he said that he would consult with board members.
In fact, the original contract says consultant will conduct two workshops for the Board of Education. I was only invited to one. I never got a second workshop. I don't know if anyone else did, but I didn't. Consultant will also research, review previous board meetings, which is something else he billed us for, again, attend board meetings, and consult with the Board of Education members. The things on this list were done within the timeframe of his contract. If a contractor came to my house, I guarantee he wouldn't do any additional work without my prior approval. And we did not give prior board approval to add on to his scope of work. It was not to exceed $6,000.
I just would like to add that I think it's important for the board to pay consultants and contractors for what they do, and the original contract includes what he is billing for, so therefore, he is being paid for what he did. I think it'd be wise for the board to send a strong message to consultants and people who provide services from outside of the district that we're not-- uh, people who provide services from outside of the district, uh, that we're not gonna just lie, take it lying down and be bullied, uh, every time someone produces an invoice for work that they've already got paid for. So I just wanna say with all due respect, I, I, I respect Mr. Pruitt, I, I respect his work, um, and I just don't see justification for double the amount of the original contract without any real additional, uh, uh, work not priorly approved by the board, not just to board members.
He could keep working from now until the end of September, and it is still included in that not to exceed six thousand dollars because that was the date the contract was good until.
Clerk Martinez?
Thank you, President Ayala. At the, when three board members were present, that constitutes a quorum. That's why it was, um, on the agenda as a workshop. Three board members found the, the information valuable, two board members moved forward as a quorum, and a majority of the quorum to move forward with additional work. So this is what he's billing for.
We, we said we would, like, one other workshop, he had already given one workshop in his original contract, he said he would give two workshops, and to date, I have never been invited to another workshop. So I've never gotten the one that was in the original contract, so it is an additional work.
It's, it's not easy to teach somebody or share information with somebody when it's not well received. It's not easy. So there's gonna be debate as to whether or not the services are appreciated. The man has written down his documentation, his hours, and you know what happens when services are rendered and the person does not get paid. So that would be the next step, if we choose to enter into that arena. I strongly suggest we don't go in that area, let's pay the man for his services, all we need to do is take a vote. So, at that point, is there, are there any more comments?
Yeah, one more comment, um, we're, we're being charged, we're being charged, uh, for having lunch, we're being, we're being charged. Previous, uh, the previous sheet had on there a lunch meeting, and that's a three-hundred-dollar charge. I don't think it's fair for a consultant to have lunch with a board member, the board member pays for the lunch, and then still be charged three hundred dollars?
You, you have a choice to vote, sir. Okay, we have a motion to pay Mr. Allen.
I motion that we pay Mr. Allen.
Wait a minute, I, I'd like to clarify something.
Okay.
Has he been paid the six thousand dollars yet?
Uh, Mohammed?
Mohammed.
Uh, yeah, as of now, we paid him fifty-seven-hundred based on his, uh, original contract, which was not to exceed six thousand dollars.
Okay.
Then he rendered additional services on top of that.
No, he did not.
That's why we're voting.
And, and the board didn't approve it.
I have a question about the eight hundred dollars that he, um, charged for consult with, consultation with board members. Now, that was in the original statement that he would do, uh, consulting with board members. So I agree with Ms. Kelly on that one, the eight hundred dollars, I don't think we should pay that again if it was in, in the first initial consulting agreement. I don't understand why we are being double, um, paid, except, expected to pay the additional eight hundred dollars for that, I don't understand that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say...
I also never saw, we're being charged nine hundred dollars for Board Agenda Design and Brown Act, if that was supposed to be the focus of our workshop, that's not at all what I got out of it.
I believe that was for our, um, the superintendent's office for designing the, the agenda, so we would not violate the Brown Act.
Well, first of all, I have something to say about the agenda, too. Now, I, I, this is, it's, it's black and white, it's, it's cut and dried, it's clear. I, I just don't understand this.
Okay, can we get a motion? We have a motion, do we have a second? And the motion is to pay RJ Allen for his services. Do we have a second? I will, I will second the motion. So we have a, a first from Mr. Martinez, clerk, and then we have a, a second by the President of the Board. And now, we're gonna take a vote.
Quick discussion.
Okay, quick discussion.
Just pick you back on what you said. It'll run us more than fifty-three-hundred dollars if we have to go to court on it, simple as that. I believe the man did the work in good faith, and, uh, that's why I made a motion.
Then, then I'd like to make a suggestion that we get legal counsel advice, independent legal counsel advice on this issue.
And then we're gonna pay legal counsel on top of everything else. Okay, uh, we need just to take a vote here, 'cause we have a motion, the main motion is to pay RJ Allen, and then legal counsel is, is another issue.
Well, I, I'd like to make an amendment, a motion to amend. A motion to amend the original, the original motion as agendized to include that, uh, we get legal advice on this issue before proceeding forward. If, if legal expertise says pay him, then we, then we pay him.
Could we ask for, uh, clarification?
I, I don't see why not.
Or recommendation?
Yes.
Mr. Islam?
Yes.
Is there a recommendation on this?
Well, the recommendations is if, if, uh, Mr. Allen did render the services, that's the understanding of the board, and, but the, one thing I must, uh, uh, give you from my perspective, um, as a, as a acting superintendent, I would advise the board that as, as a, any contract, there's a, the contract rules apply, uh, that, uh, that's the whole purpose of signing a contract between two party, district and, and discuss Mr. Allen. I'm, I'm pretty sure Mr. Allen, this is not the first time he's doing this type of work, uh, unless he has a better, different understanding from the board, Board of Education, that, uh, contract, he have six thousand not to exceed, then he can continue, uh, do his work, and board will approve his, amend his contract at later date. I don't know, because I was not involved in that conversations with the board and with him. One thing I know, he submitted an invoice claiming that he service being rendered up to additional fifty-eight, uh, fifty-five, uh, fifty-five-hundred on the, uh, top of, um, what was previous contract, which was not to exceed six thousand.
Okay, so he submitted his bill, needs to be paid.
Didn't, didn't you submit a letter to him telling him that his services were no longer needed?
Yes, I did, based on his last invoices, he present to us for fifty-three-hundred, which is, you have a copy of this in front of you. Then, after that, I understand he has, um, he made a mistake, there's a couple more hours he didn't bill us, and I got amended bill, which makes up now eleven thousand and five, the total contract.
He cannot keep doing work that was not prior, did not, show me in the minutes where we approved any more money for Mr. Pruitt.
We have a motion to pay RJ Allen, we have a first and we have a second. We have an amendment by Mr. Montez to seek legal counsel. We have a first and second on the first motion.
Do we, do we need to clear the?
Uh, you know, I think we're okay, please, give us, this is not easy, but we'll get through this. Okay, we have an amendment to seek legal counsel, and that's, and do you have a second? We're gonna take a second on the amendment, do you have a second? For the amendment for legal counsel.
Second.
Okay, so we have an amendment, a proposed amendment, a, a, a motion and a second now, but we have the main motion.
First we do the amendment, then we...
Okay, let's, let's, uh, vote on the amendment. Vote by board members.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
I abstain, because I wasn't here for this initial...
Okay.
...process, so I really am not at liberty to give a, a, a good, honest opinion, so abstain.
Okay, so it's two to two.
Amendment fails?
Amendment does not pass, so now let's go back to the main motion. To pay RJ Allen for services rendered, we have a first and a second.
No.
No.
Excuse me. Excuse me, we, we have respect for each other here, please. Vote by board members.
Aye.
I abstain again.
Aye.
And I abstain again.
No.
I already gave mine.
Okay, so we have, uh, uh, motion does not pass, it's two-two and one abstention. And we move on.
We're on action items.
Next we have, uh, action items. Action items will be enacted in one motion unless members of the board, we're on page five, members of the Board of Education request specific items to be discussed. We're, uh, looking to approve K one through K nine.
I do not find, uh, a line for, uh, voting for motions.
No, 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 but we can go ahead and put one in there. Do we have a, uh, do we have any, before we vote, now, let's go ahead and, and take a motion? Do we have a motion to accept K one through K nine, and then we'll come back to the pulls?
I'll make that motion, sir.
Okay, Mr. Martinez? And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Gilbert? Second? Okay, um... We have a first and a second. Do we have, uh, any pulls before we vote?
Nope.
Are we okay? No, you're okay? Okay, vote by board members, let me restate this, make sure we're perfectly clear, we're voting on action items, K one to K nine, we have a, uh, motion to accept by, uh, Mr. Martinez, and a second by, uh, Gilbert. Votes by board members?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Five oh, and preferential, uh, vote by Mica?
Aye.
I remembered that time. Thank you so much. Okay, uh, next we have communications, and, uh, lots been said tonight. Maybe we can start with, uh, Ms. O'Kelly this time.
Okay, the first thing I'd like to point out for the third time is the changing of the format of the agenda, I believe that should be a, to, a board decision, I don't see where any single board member, uh, had the right to change the format. The superintendent's report belongs at the beginning of the meeting, once the, we begin our business, it is a meeting of the Board of Education, it's not the superintendent's meeting, it's a meeting of the Board of Education, and from there on out, it's, the board should be who the people hear from, and at the end, the board should be the last people that the people hear from. So I really would like that changed, as well as some, I thought, I did not see anything wrong with our old, uh, agenda format, I don't know where this change came about or why it was initiated, but it should be something that we all vote on and make sure we're all happy with. Uh, the second thing I wanted to talk about, uh, tonight, um, I'm very, very excited about the middle and elementary school sports program, I think it's a wonderful thing for our kids in this district, and I really, uh, know the effort and whatever that goes into it. However, I've been looking at the additional cost associated with it, now, we approved a total amount of seventy-three thousand for the program, with forty thousand coming from a grant and thirty-three thousand coming from the district. And, uh, basically, the only thing covered by the consultant, um, that, uh, we are working with is the fees for two people who are not on Bill's staff out of these other fees. But I'm wondering who is paying for the custodial fees, which for, you know, the year would run ten to fifteen thousand, the security fees would be another ten to fifteen thousand, the officials' fees would run about ten thousand. Equipment, uh, the, the athletic equipment, uh, for fifteen thousand, and awards run about ten thousand, these are just really rough figures, but, um, I would like, um, I don't know if this is coming out of general fund, if it's coming out of our contract with Athletes for Life, but Mr. Islam, could I, uh, ask for an itemized report of all expenses for the middle and elementary school sports programs that are being paid out of district funds?
Yes.
Okay, if you could have that by the next board meeting?
Yes, I can.
And then, then on top of that, we've hired a TOSA to oversee the program, well, if we're paying a consultant to oversee the program, and the principals are at all the games, there's always administrators there overseeing what's hap, actually happening, I don't really know why we need a person in charge of this, but I understand the TOSA has some additional responsibilities. However, uh, the TOSA that, um, um, has been hired has absolutely no budget experience, and I'm very concerned that a person with no budget experience is gonna be in charge of a multimillion-dollar after-school program budget. I think this is something we need to lurk, look at, um, we've never had, uh, administrative intern, first of all, that didn't have a master's degree, and second of all, that only, he's coming to this position with two years of experience only as an administrative intern. I'm very concerned about that, and, and a person with such a lack of experience being in such a position. Athletics are a wonderful addition to what we do for our kids, but I am extremely concerned that there's the off-chance that the emphasis on, that is being placed on sports in our district has cost our district academically, it's cost our students. The API scores are out, and seventeen of our schools went down, most of them by a considerable amount. This is the, the API is what we are measured by in terms of our academic progress. And, uh, seventeen schools, that's more than half of our schools, took a drop, and many of them took a very big drop. So I think we need to make sure we have our priorities in order here, our business is educating children. What we can add to that, to give them a more well-rounded program, is wonderful, but it should not overshadow or receive more funding or receive more attention than our primary purpose here, which is the education of our children. Thank you.
Mica, I'm sorry, I, I should've, uh, recommended you first, again, I apologize, but would you please, uh, say a few words?
Thank you, uh, President Ayala, um, I just wanted to thank all that came out, uh, this evening, uh, thank you for coming, um, also want to thank all that came, went to the, uh, Rialto and Eisenhower football game this past weekend, very beautiful field, great job on the field, um, uh, this past week, we had our first DSEC meeting, uh, it was really nice, got to meet some other students from other schools, and a lot of people that we're gonna be, uh, spending a lot of time with this year, and, um, uh, that's it, just, uh, thank you for coming out once again, and then, uh, enjoy the rest of the night.
Thank you, Mica. Uh, next we have, uh, Ms. Gilbert.
Thank you, President Ayala. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Stewart and his staff here at Hugh Banks Elementary for allowing us to meet here for this evening, and to say I appreciate it, the little young women who performed for us this evening, let them know... Let them know that we like their style of dance, and we maybe will see them in putting on the ritz. And also, speaking of putting on the ritz, I read in my email that the grant applications are out, so teachers, if you want to get some of that ritz money to help you in your classrooms, don't hesitate to apply for a grant. I have seen some of the evidence of grants that worked in the past, where teachers use that money to enhance their teaching and their classrooms. I wanna also thank the Rotary Club for the dictionaries. I've gotten these in the past, and they're very useful and convenient. Although we have spell check and a thesaurus on our computer, sometime, we still need a dictionary. So, don't ever forget the use of the dictionary. And I have an announcement for parents. The City of Rialto puts on the International Family Festival every third weekend in September, which will be coming up on September the 20th. And I want to let you know that members of the East Rialto Kiwanis will be, will be doing kid prints. If you have young children, and we know how important it is to keep our children safe, that you can come get finger, your children fingerprinted, you will keep the card in your possession, just in case your child is lost, or abducted, or anything unsafe happens to them. So, come out on, for the family festival, and bring your minor children, so that they can be fingerprinted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Uh, next, we have, uh, clerk of the board, Joseph Martinez.
Thank you, President Ayala. As always, I'd like to thank everyone for attending, especially our associations. It, it's good to see your fo, faces here. I want to thank everyone who has served, or is in our military, and thank you for serving. I did not, um, serve, I was unable to serve. And I'm still sad about that. Okay, um, just to correct some, some things that I've heard tonight. Dr. Sebrun is not being considered for, for release. He is safe, he has, uh, experienced some personal tragedies, and, uh, he, he he was out on bereavement tonight. The board saw it.
I think it'd be better not to speak personnel matters. I think it'd be better not to, Mr. Islam?
Let it be, um, safe to say that, uh, he is safe. Uh, Dr. Sebrun's vision is coming to fruition. All the high school fields are his baby. All that turf you see there, that's his vision. Years ago, um, he would see all the schools with the high dollars in them, and, uh, they'd say, "Our kids deserve that, our kids need that," and the board backed him on it. Our agenda is put together by the president and the superintendent, so any agenda changes is up to them, not the board. And student achievement, I blame the board for not spending 80% of our energy and time in a board meeting on academic, academic achievement, improvement, and failing to lead in an academic manner. That's been going for some three years now. And, uh, take whatever you will from that. Other than that, have a great evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Next, we have Vice President of the Board Edgar Montez.
Good evening. Buenas noches. It's always nice to hear that. Um, I, I just would, uh, would like to, uh, thank, um, Mr. Mani Stewart, for welcoming us here today. Uh, it's always, it's always a real joy, really, to, to, uh, come out and have our, uh, our, our school board meetings at different school sites. But I'll be honest with you, it's truly, truly better to visit them during school hours, where you can get a, a real true feel of, uh, the operations of a school during school hours. You get a better feel for the culture of the school, and, um, and, and I've heard nothing but good things about this school, Mr. Mani Stewart, and, and yourself as a principal. Keep up the good work. Thank you very much for all that you do for this community. I'd like to, uh, I have a gift for Mica, our student board member. And, um, this, this was given to the board, uh, so we can sharpen up on our, uh, procedures, on our protocol as far as, uh, the board meetings. And, uh, I still, myself, feel I need to, uh, improve, uh, my knowledge of the Roberts Rules of Order, and, and just, uh, uh, parliamentary procedure in general. But I want to give you my book, because, uh, I have access to other outlets to get this information, and, uh, and workshops available through, um, uh, the yearly, uh, conferences that we're, that, that we're able to attend. So, I want to give you my copy, and, and hope that you gain, um, uh, a, a better knowledge of the, uh, the protocol for our meetings. And, and, um, I want to thank you for, uh, you know, having an interest in being a student board member. I want to point out that, uh, I believe you have a right to, uh, enter discussion on certain items with us, if you would like to weigh in. Previous, uh, student board members have not, have chose not to do so, but if I'm correct, I believe on every preferential student vote that you get, you have a right to, to weigh in on the discussion. Now, of course, as a preferential vote, a student board member vote, it's not a, uh, valid official vote, but it is a, uh, it is, I believe, uh, a good, uh, sign of faith to have a, a preferential vote by a student board member, and when possible, input as a student, as a student board member, um, if you choose to. And that, we have, uh, various board bylaws, policies, that pertain to the student board member, and I'd like to ask Mr. Islam to provide, uh, copies of the student board bylaws to, uh, Mica, and perhaps even all, uh, access to all the board bylaws, since you are a member of this governing board. So, I give you my book. And, um, and thank you. And, and you never know, I mean, you might be, you know, you might be sitting in this chair someday. You know, so, so, um, so thank you, or any of these chairs. So, thank you, uh, for, for all that you do as a student board member, and, and remember, you're a representative for the rest of your peers. And, um, I want to thank your parents, 'cause I see your parents here all the time, so I want to thank them for coming here to support you. And, um, and, and please, look, read up on those bylaws, and if you have a right to speak up, and you feel you have, you should, then please do so.
Thank you.
Uh, one more thing, um, I just would like to mention, uh, I, I want to, I, I want to first, uh, send a message, say, uh, give a message to all, uh, our USD employees and staff members, everyone, uh, from all departments. You know, we, we, uh, we as a district have, have, uh, have been going through a lot of things recently. And, um, and I'm sure, you know, uh, before I got here to the district, or any of us up here, there, some of you know well that there's been things in the past that this district has had to deal with. But I really would like to, uh, thank this board, uh, now more than ever, for, um, uh, the way that we've been able to, uh, uh, process some, some of the things that have been going on in our district, and some of the things that we need to do to move forward. I want to thank this board now, uh, for, uh, working, our, our workability to work together. I, I really think it's come a long way. I really think it has improved, and I want to thank every, every single one of, of, uh, my peers on this board, and, and I would especially like to thank, uh, board member Joanne Gilbert, because as the, um, senior board member, uh, on this board, now more than ever has her, uh, her, her wisdom and her experience as, as a, a board member come forward, and really, uh, helped us work together and move along. So, thank you, uh, Joanne.
Thank you.
And, and and, uh, and Mohammed, I just would like to say, um, you must be doing something right, 'cause I haven't been getting any complaints. So, keep up the good work, thank you for helping us through this time. And, um, uh, you know, continue to, uh, if you need any support from, from me, or from any of the board members, we've all already told you that, uh, you know, we're here to, uh, to, uh, help everyone, so, um, keep up the good work, thank you. That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Well, thank you, Vice President Montez. Uh, in addition to everything that's been said tonight, I want everyone to know that we, as a board, will continue to make our kids a priority. We will continue to provide them with the best opportunities to succeed, and while at the same time assisting them, and helping them to find their passions. That's important, too. We will do this by continuing to support our staff, and by treating the parents of our students with respect and dignity. On behalf of our board, we thank you for your attendance and interest in your child's education. But before we adjourn, uh, I also want to say thank you to the Rotary Club for the dictionary, because this is, um, this means a lot, 'cause it's a symbol. And without knowledge, without information, without resources, we don't move forward. So, thank you again. And before we get the motion to adjourn, again, I, uh, I would like to, before we close, take a, a minute in remembrance of 9/11 for all the police and, and firemen that dedicated and lost their lives. So, if we would just take a minute in prayer for their souls, it would be appreciated. Before we adjourn, I, I said we were gonna adjourn, but we want to give the superintendent an opportunity, the acting superintendent Mohammed, uh, an opportunity to, uh, say a few words.
Thank you, board. There's a, we have a, a two-event this Friday. I'd like to welcome board, and staff, and committee, uh, members to come, uh, su, support our students. One of them is at Carter High School. We have a grand opening for our track and field. I know, member of the board, you saw Rialto High School, and I'd like to see you at the Carter, please. They need your support, and the staff, and the committee, please. We need to be there to, uh, support our students. The other event, uh, Friday, uh, Dad Nights. Um, again, I'd like you to be there, if you please can make there, to, show you, you support our, our parents, particularly for our dads. That's all we have. Thank you.
With that in mind, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
We have a first and second, and, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The time is 8:26.